No, I didn't even bring the charger this time because it's at 100% and I don't think the meeting will be too long. It could last a few hours.
Do we do a flag salute?
Why not?
Do we, do we do it?
Is there any? I think there is.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's workshop regarding Community Choice Energy. So if you wouldn't mind, please join us for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, Sheri.
Note for the record that all council members are present.
All right, great. So do I have an adoption of tonight's agenda?
I'll make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. All right, so tonight we have a workshop. We have a presentation on Peninsula Clean Energy. Clay, would you, do you, are you doing the staff report or are we just turn it over to the county?
I got our folks here from the county and let them take, run with it.
Okay.
Good evening, mayor, council. Thank you so much for having us tonight. My name is Kirsten Pringle. I work in the county's Office of Sustainability. And with me here I have David Silbermann, who works in the Office of County Council as a deputy. And he'll be here to answer any legal questions that you have after my presentation. And first off, I just want to not only thank you for having us, but thank council member Lou for serving on our Community Choice Energy Advisory Committee, which has been meeting since last May. She's been really involved in giving feedback on behalf of the residents of Brisbane in this process. So thank you for all your participation and time in this. So if you may have heard, the county is currently exploring Community Choice Energy. And we've been doing it for about a year and a half now. And now we're asking each of the cities to join Peninsula Clean Energy by the end of February. So the goal of tonight is to educate you on what Community Choice Energy is, what Peninsula Clean Energy is, and all the steps you need to take in order to join it. So what is Community Choice Energy? Community Choice Energy is actually a model that's being used all over the United States. It's currently active in six states with many other considering it. And here in California, there are currently three active Community Choice Energy programs: one in Marin, one in Sonoma, and one in the city of Lancaster, which is in Southern California. So what is Community Choice Energy? Well, a really basic way to think about how we get our electricity now is that PG&E buys the energy on our behalf. They deliver it through the grid and they maintain that grid. And then they deliver it to our house and they bill and meter us. Community Choice Energy program will only take out the first part. So the Community Choice Energy program would purchase energy on behalf of its municipal, commercial, and residential accounts. However, PG&E would continue to deliver the energy and maintain the grid and deliver it to your house and give a bill. So it's only on that energy buying portion. So what are the benefits of Community Choice Energy? Why are communities all over California looking at this? Well, the main aspect, and I think the one that really drew council member Groom and council member Pine, who have been really advocates of this program, is the cleaner energy aspect. So Community Choice Energy programs here in California have really been champions of buying more renewable energy currently offered by their incumbent utilities, which is PG&E for Northern California. Another aspect is the community and customer choice. So right now customers, electricity customers, have no choice in who they're buying the energy from and what the renewable power content of that energy is. This would just give consumers another choice. So they can choose between Peninsula Clean Energy or between PG&E. And then the third big aspect of this is community control. So this Community Choice Energy program, we run as a nonprofit energy agency with a board of directors made up of one elected official from each of the cities it serves. So all the decisions will be made by local elected officials, which is something that a lot of residents or electricity customers don't have access to now as far as their electricity. So even though currently our electricity rates and programs are set at a public process through the CPUC, I think a lot of people feel really disconnected from that. They don't go to Sacramento, go to the CPUC to see these hearings. But because this energy agency would be so local, it'll give people a lot closer aspect, access to it and be able to give their input. We're also really excited about the fact that this program will have all these extra reserve funds that can be used for local projects tailored to the community. So this program's not taxpayer funded, it's rate payer funded. So this is not additional tax. It's the rate payer funds that you already pay as electricity customer. And right now there's a certain extra amount, a certain revenue that goes from your rate payer funds that goes to PG&E shareholders because it's a company. Through this agency, we'll have this new pool of funds that can be used for things like local renewable energy build-out projects, so solar or wind or other innovative projects here in San Mateo County, local energy efficiency projects tailored to the community it serves, or any number of things that we decide to do. I mean, we have Silicon Valley right here in San Mateo County. There's all sorts of cool innovative stuff we can do with, you know, electric vehicles, Tesla Power Walls. It's really up to us how we get to use those funds. But the idea is that those funds currently are not being used for San Mateo County, and they could be. So this is just a small excerpt from the town of San Anselmo's Climate Action Plan. The town in San Anselmo is in Marin County, so it's a Marin Clean Energy customer. But before they decided to join Marin Clean Energy, they decided to look at all these different measures and see what would be the biggest one to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. And as you can see from this chart, Community Choice Energy, also known as Community Choice Irrigation, which is why you see CCA up there, have the biggest, largest effect in reducing their greenhouse gas emissions by far. This just goes with the sustainable aspect of this program, the renewable energies. So we're reducing energy or greenhouse gas emissions from electricity generation. We know a lot of the cities in the county have climate action plan goals, or just general sustainability goals. And it can be kind of hard to move the dial on some of these things. And this is one program that can move the dial by a huge amount without having to ask people to change their individual behaviors. This is a chart about three of the successful CCE programs to date in California. The first one is Marin Clean Energy. So Marin Clean Energy was the first one out the gate. It started serving customers in May 2010. And they've been generally able to save customers money from 2% to 5% monthly on their energy bills. They have a default energy product that is 56% renewable with options to buy 100% renewable. Or they just now have a new 100% local solar option. So they actually built a local solar development in Marin County, and customers can pay a little more to get energy from that source. And some interesting information, Marin Clean Energy has really shown that Community Choice Energy programs are pushing for new renewable energy development. So since its start in 2010, Marin Clean Energy has contracted for over 235 megawatts of new renewable energy. Sonoma Clean Power started in 2014. They have a 36% renewable energy product. And they, like Marin, also have the option for customers to pay a little more and have 100% renewable energy product. And in their first year, Sonoma Clean Power reduced their greenhouse gas emissions by over 40%. Lancaster Choice Energy, once again Lancaster's in Southern California, has a 35% renewable energy default with 100% renewable option. And they've already contracted for 10 megawatts of local solar in their area. If you've never been to Lancaster, it's out in the desert. So they're actually really well placed to have their own solar developments right in their town and get their energy from there. So why did we start looking at Community Choice Energy in San Mateo County? Well, once again, this was really spearheaded by the efforts of supervisor Dave Pine and supervisor Kelly Groom. They saw the positive results in Marin and Sonoma counties. They saw the climate action plan goals that cities throughout the county had and how aggressive those goals were. There was support from local advocacy groups. So we have a really active group of residents called San Mateo Community Choice that advocate on behalf of Community Choice Energy. And they're made up from residents all throughout the county. And we've had really positive feedback from the public and from commercial customers. So we've been doing general outreach on this program for about the past year, and all the feedback has been pretty positive. So some of the basic program features, what is this Community Choice Energy program going to look like? It will be a joint powers authority made up of each of the cities that decide to join it as a founding member in the county. Each founding member city will have one person on the board of directors. The county will have two. The utility PG&E will continue to provide billing. So you'll still get a PG&E bill. Customer service and line maintenance. So PG&E still maintains the lines. If someone's power lines go out, you still call PG&E. If you have problems with your service, you still call PG&E. Once again, the difference is only who is buying your electricity. So it shows up on your bill. So you still get a PG&E bill. It just shows up as a different electricity generation charge. So if you look at your PG&E bill right now, so this is an example, you have different line item charges. One of these is your generation charge. So this will not be an additional charge. It'll just replace your PG&E charge. Go back one more. For just this bottom bullet point, which is really important, is that there's a number of low-income programs that PG&E currently offers, such as CARE, Medical Baseline, and FARA. And all these programs continue under Peninsula Clean Energy. So low-income customers still benefit from these programs. Important note about this program is it's an opt-out program by state legislation, meaning all customers under Peninsula Clean Energy's service territory will be automatically enrolled in the program. However, they can choose to opt out at any time. So before the program launches, there's a 120-day notification period. So we send out two notices 60 days before the program launches and two notifications 60 days after to all electricity customers, notifying of them that this is coming and telling them how to opt out the program. However, a customer can choose to opt out at any point and go back to PG&E. And they can even go back to PG&E and then decide to go back to Peninsula Clean Energy. So they have that flexibility between the two programs. The California Public Utilities Commission does see some aspects of Community Choice Energy programs. Community Choice Energy programs have to submit something called an implementation plan, which is kind of like a little less than a business plan. It makes sure that you have all your ducks in a row. It says what your program offerings will be and your process for rate setting. And the CPUC has to approve that. And they also oversee relations between Peninsula Clean Energy and PG&E. However, something important to note is the CPUC does not oversee rate setting in a Community Choice Energy program. So the rates will be set by the board of directors. So here in San Mateo County, it'll be governed by a board of directors made up elected officials from each of the cities it serves. The program will be legally and financially separate from the jurisdictions it serves. So if something happens, then the city's general funds won't be on the line. We know this is a concern for many cities. And the same with legal issues. You cannot be legally at risk for whatever happens to Peninsula Clean Energy. There is no cost at this time for the cities to join. If you do decide to pass at this time, you can join at a later date, but there may be a cost associated with that. And the deadline for each city to join is the end of February. So I'm going to go over these next part kind of slowly. So the county did a technical feasibility study. And this is kind of a best practice for all new emerging Community Choice Energy programs to do. We hired a really skilled set of consultants called Pacific Energy Advisors, who did this study also for Marin and Sonoma. And the point of the study was to look at a number of things. Overall, it's just to make sure that this was feasible for the county and all the cities to do. So one of these we looked at is, is there enough renewable energy on the grid to support all the electricity that we need? The second question was, well, if we can get this renewable energy and regular energy, what prices can we get it at? Is it economically viable for us to start this program? We also wanted to make sure that whatever mix that we offered would have less greenhouse gas emission than PG&E, because that is the goal of the program, to be more sustainable. And we did a really robust risk analysis. So we wanted to see what are all the biggest risks of this program and how can we mitigate them? So right now, I'm going to go over the highlights of the study, but I want to note that it is publicly available on the Peninsula Clean Energy website. It is about 80 pages long, which I know sounds horrible, but most people, I think, could get through it. And if you really want to look into the details of this, it's a really good read. So this slide, I just wanted to kind of highlight what PG&E's current energy portfolio looks like, to give you a comparison of what PC&Es will look like. So as you'll note, PG&E actually has a really clean portfolio. 27% of their energy comes from renewable resources. In addition, they have 21% of their energy comes from nuclear and another 8% comes from large hydroelectric. And the reason I'm putting this out is because nuclear and hydroelectric sources are considered greenhouse gas-free, so they don't have greenhouse gas emissions, but they are not considered renewable. So in this technical study, we looked at three possible scenarios. The first was...
Could you back up just a second? Can you explain California power mix, what that is?
Yeah, so the California power mix, I believe, is just the mix that's on the grid in general. So when you go out for like a spot market, say we needed to make a purchase on a day-by-day basis, I believe what they're alluding to is that's generally what's in the grid at any given moment.
That all the power companies...
Exactly. Because to be clear, when you put energy onto the grid, you can't chase where it's going. So when we say we're going to have 100%, you're purchasing 100% renewable energy, it means that a certain amount of 100% renewable energy is putting, being put onto the grid on your behalf. But it does not guarantee that the energy coming into your house is 100% renewable energy, just because there's no way to track that.
So someone who doesn't ask for it could be getting it?
Yes. The idea is to push overall for more renewable energy. So we studied three scenarios in the technical study. The first was a 35% renewable energy scenario with the idea that it would scale up to 50% by 2030. The second was 50% renewable energy, scaling up to 75% by 2030. And the third was 100% renewable energy. And just a final note here, we made the assumption in all of these that we weren't going to purchase any coal or nuclear energy. Coal because it has a really high greenhouse gas emission rate, and so we want to totally exclude that. Nuclear because you cannot purchase any new nuclear right now. It is all contracted for. So that is totally added to the picture. So I'm going to go over this pretty slowly, kind of bit by bit, just because this is the heart of the study. And I think this is really important for you guys to make an informed decision about this program. So scenario one, once again, was the 35% renewable energy option. We found that an average customer would save 6% per month on their bill if they enrolled in this program, which for an average customer, residential customer, is about $5.40 per month. One of the things we looked at in this study is the participation rate. So how many customers would choose to opt out of our program and go back to PG&E? So we assumed under 35%, it would be 15% opt-out rate. So 15% of people would still go back to PG&E. However, when we looked at the scenario for the greenhouse gas emissions, we found there's actually an increase in greenhouse gas emissions compared to PG&E. And that is because PG&E has all that nuclear and hard, large hydroelectric energy, which is not renewable but greenhouse gas-free. So this option basically became a nonstarter because we couldn't reduce our greenhouse gas emissions. So then we looked at scenario two. So scenario two is 50% renewable and actually has an additional 13% greenhouse gas-free energy from large hydroelectric. So the total amount of the portfolio is 63% greenhouse gas-free. The average customer would save 4% per month on their bill, which would total about $4.05 per month. The opt-out rate was the same, still 15%. And there was a really large reduction in greenhouse gas emissions under this scenario, which was 75 metric tons. Scenario three was 100% renewable energy option. We found that this option would increase customers' bills by about 2% for a month, which would be an average of about $1.50 for a customer. Under this scenario, the opt-out rate was higher because customers would be, have to pay more. So it was about 25% for residential and small commercial customers and 50% for large customers, which would be large business accounts and commercial accounts because they're more price sensitive. And this had the biggest, as we might imagine, greenhouse gas reduction of 204,000 metric tons. And I want to say in the greenhouse gas reduction, that's in year one. So that accumulates over time that the program's going.
Question on that. So if, if more people choose scenario two, you know, the 50% renewable, would that impact the rates that, the savings? Could there potentially be more savings if more people choose the higher renewable energy scenario over time? And I'm curious to know what, what has happened in the other ones that are already up and running in Marin and Sonoma and Lancaster? Are people opting for scenario two, which is better for the environment, but more costly? Or are more people going for scenario one?
So Marin, for example, has about 56% and 100%. So they only have two scenarios. My understanding is that more people opting for the 100% wouldn't make it more cost-effective because it's more based on the contracts that you get. And it's kind of a mixed bag. So Marin's actually interesting, and they've now expanded outside Marin counties. They have a number of entities that are not in Marin County but part of Marin Clean Energy. And they found that in their newer communities, a lot more people are entering automatically into the 100% renewable option than the rest of Marin County. And what I found really interesting is actually their entity that has the highest number of people in the city that choose to be 100% is Richmond, which is the, I think, one of the least wealthy cities in all of Marin Clean Energy's territory. I think because they have the refineries and air pollution issues, their, their residents really see the benefit of programs like this. So it's kind of a mixed bag depending on the community. Okay. So risk uncertainties and mitigation. So like I said, we definitely wanted to look at all the potential risks for the program and think about how we might mitigate this on the long term. So one of the biggest risks was the PG&E rate uncertainty. So Peninsula Clean Energy is always going to get fair to PG&E prices because customers can choose either one of them. And unfortunately, we have no control over what PG&E rates are going to be.
Delivery rates?
Yeah. So this is only on the generation rates.
Generation.
Yeah. So whether you're a PG&E or PC&E customer, you pay the same delivery charge for your energy, as well as there's some other smaller charges that are pretty much the same across the board. So it's really just the generation part of it. However, there is this special charge that only Community Choice Energy customers pay. And up there is called an exit fee. It's basically a departing load fee. So the idea of this is that PG&E entered into all these contracts on everyone's behalf, and they're long-term contracts, so 10, 15, 20 years. And now customers are leaving them, leaving them with all this excess energy. So they have to sell it to get rid of it. And right now, the energy market is so low that they're losing money on selling this electricity back to the grid. So the CPUC has allowed them to recover those costs in what is known as this exit fee. From last year to this year, so 2015, 16, the exit fee almost doubled, which was really tough for current Community Choice Energy programs. And you might have read about it. Something that luckily we did is when we did the study, we assumed that, we knew the PCI or exit fee was going to increase. So we assumed it was going to increase 75%. It actually increased 95%. So we were pretty conservative. And in addition, since we did this study, the energy market has dropped again. So the prices are even lower than what we assumed when we did the study. So we're saving money on the energy prices, even though our customers will have to pay a little more in the exit fee than we thought they did. So it's kind of a wash for us. So for existing, or new CCEs, this exit fee problem isn't much of the problem because we can factor it in now. But for existing CCEs, it has been a little bit of an issue. And the big problem in the long term is how to plan for this, because it can jump so much from one year to the next. It's really important for us fiscally to be able to predict those type of things.
So with the exit fee, you said that it's something to, you know, compensate PG&E for their existing contracts. But say this program is in existence in, you know, 10 to 15 years down the line, what justification will they have at that point for their exit fee?
Correct. So the idea is that over time, the exit fee will disappear. So this is a monthly fee that all customers will pay per kilowatt hour. So if you use more energy, it might be a little more. If you use less, it might be a little less. But the idea is over time, it should disappear because those contracts will be up. And then you will, PG&E can buy new contracts that no longer take you as a customer into account. A good way to mitigate this is that with all these emerging CCEs and existing CCEs, we really have a strong coalition now to be able to push for more regulation on this exit fee and at least have more transparency in how it's calculated. And there's actually a workshop going on next month with the CPUC to kind of discuss these kind of things and how we can make it a more transparent process.
Do they charge an administrative fee for the billing?
They do not, as far as I know, charge an administrative fee.
What's the average, oh, am I on? Okay. Can you hear me? Okay. What's the average exit fee for residential?
It depends on your kilowatt hours. I believe next year is going to be about $12 to $13 per month. Last year is about 6.25, 6.30.
So in that reduction that you showed with the 6%, 4% and then increase in 2%, is that, is that, that's incorporating that monthly fee or no?
Yes. So the good news is it does incorporate the PCI exit fee and also incorporates any overhead or administrative costs. So that's kind of like the total final cost to the residential customer.
So it's still savings in the first two scenarios, even with that exit fee?
Correct, yes.
Just to piggyback on that. So you said, though, that you had budgeted for 75% increase, but it's at 95%. So do these numbers reflect 95% or 75%?
Those numbers reflect 75%. But going back to our technical consultants, they were pretty confident that it wouldn't affect the program. So part of what we did in here, which is not in these slides, is they did a sensitivity analysis on each of these risks. So they said, what's the high-case scenario? What's the low-case scenario? And looking at both, would the program still be viable? So they did the high-case scenario of the exit fee, which I believe they looked at 120, 20% increase in the exit fee. And they found that even under that amount of increase, it would still be a viable program. So we're pretty confident that we'll still be able to go out the door, start the program with the rates that are still lower than PG&E, especially now that the market has dropped since we did this study. And so we can buy energy cheaper than we thought we could.
So on that, when you say that the CPUC covers or regulates what the exit fee can be, what is the thought that this fee is going to keep doubling? Or how do we have any control on that exit fee?
That's a good question. There's supposed to be some type of formula that is set by the CPUC that's approved. But there are people that have argued that's not a very transparent process, like the formula is either not clear or PG&E is not giving accurate information. And that's what the upcoming workshops are supposed to do, is to say, this is the formula, and also maybe put some regulations on a cap in what percent it can raise from year to year. So to allow Community Choice Energy programs to plan on a long-term basis. There is fear that in my... There is fear that it might go up again or it could go down again.
And, and also, based on their recommendation, I believe the city did send a letter opposing that fee increase before it was set, along with many other cities.
Yeah, we actually had a really great turnout from a lot of the cities and counties. So thank you so much for that. And Supervisor Pyne actually went to a meeting with CPUC staffers to kind of discuss on behalf of the whole county, some of the issues we had with it and our desire to make it a better process for everybody. So the next risk is also kind of related. It's the length of the current wholesale energy price trough, which is a really fancy way to say, energy is really cheap right now, which is why we can enter into the market at such favorable rates. But we don't know what the market's going to be. So we did have our consultants look at a 10-year window of time and try to calculate or predict what the energy rates are going to be. However, we don't, and they don't foresee the rates going up really high anytime soon. However, we don't have any control over that and we can't guarantee that. One, I guess, good part of it, or bad, depending on you look at it, is that PG&E is also equally subject to those market changes. So if prices raise for us, it also raises for PG&E. So it kind of equalizes it in the end. Though one way to mitigate that is we're going to have a really diverse power portfolio. So you have contracts that are short-term and long-term, so five-year, 10-year, but also 20-year contracts. And you also have contracts in a number of different types of renewable energy to mitigate. Maybe one type of renewable energy will be really expensive one year, but another type might become cheaper. So that allows you some flexibility over time. We also project that in our reserve fund for the JPA, there will be a fund set aside to help with rate shocks. So suddenly, say, the market prices rose, it would be nice to have a little bit of fun to levelize that so the customers don't feel that rate shock as much. The next risk is the availability of large hydro. So we have predicted that we're going to have like 13, 13 to 15% of our portfolio will be large hydro. And obviously, with the drought, we can't guarantee that those resources will always be available. We are assuming that a lot of our large hydro will come from the Pacific Northwest, which hasn't been hit as hard as the drought as California. But it is important or imperative to us to have the highest amount of greenhouse gas emission reduction as possible. So having those greenhouse gas-free types of portfolio like large hydro is really important to our program, and we want to make sure we always have that. So another way to mitigate that is, once again, having that diverse portfolio. So if large hydro is really scarce in one year, maybe we can just get more of our power from solar or wind. And the last two risks were rated as being some of the much lower ones. One is opt-out uncertainty. So if a lot of customers decide to leave the program, that's really bad and the rates for everyone could go up. The biggest way I see to mitigate that is just marketing, is to provide the best available information and customer services the program as possible and just form a really strong partnership with PG&E to make sure customers have the most accurate information. And the final is CCE-specific legislation and regulatory changes, which kind of goes along with the exit fee. Every year, there's been some bill that could have possibly gone through and hurt community choice energy programs or things like the exit fee at the regulatory level at the CPUC that could be an issue. So one way to mitigate that is just to have a really strong legislative and regulatory team on staff at Peninsula Clean Energy and also work at all the, work with all the existing community choice energy programs in California to kind of form a coalition. So this is just a summary of the findings. Pacific Energy Advisors found that there's no correct answer. However, overall, the program could be viable for San Mateo County. Scenario one had more greenhouse gas emissions, even though it was the cheapest, so that would not be a great choice. Scenario two was the good balance between having a lower rate than PG&E but also having a good greenhouse gas reduction rate. And scenario three, though, it had the highest amount of greenhouse gas emission reduction was more expensive. So this is just a little bit of slides about what the Joint Powers Authority is going to look like, Peninsula Clean Energy Authority. So the purpose of it will only be focused on community choice energy and energy-related programs. So it'll always just be a community choice energy JPA. Cities can join as full members and they get one seat on the board. They'll elect one elected official and one alternate to serve. On the voting of the JPA, it's a majority vote with option for weighted vote. So most of the votes will be done as a one vote per one city basis. There is an option to do a weighted vote based on the city's electricity load, so not just the number of customers they have, but how much electricity is actually being procured on their behalf. However, even in that occasion, it requires a supermajority, which is built in. So some of the cities with the largest load, one or two of them just can't form together and kind of steamroll their process. There still has to be a supermajority of the cities to agree. So withdrawal. A city at any point may withdraw their municipal accounts without charge because cities, like residents and businesses, are also electricity customers. A city may also choose to withdraw all the customers in their jurisdiction. So this includes your municipal accounts, all your residential accounts, and all your commercial accounts. However, if, depending on the occasion in which you pull out your accounts, there may be a fee at that time. Costs. Member cities are not liable for any costs that the JPA incurs, including any debt, and they're not expected to contribute any startup costs. And new members, adding new members after launch is dependent on approval from the JPA board. So we will welcome new members later on. However, the JPA board has to vote in favor of it. So just to finish, this is the formation tie line of Peninsula Clean Energy. Right now, we're at the very end of Phase Two, where we're kind of doing some of the basic program design. And right now, we're working on that document I referenced earlier called the Implementation Plan at our advisory committee meetings. Each of the cities have until the end of February to join the program. In order to join, each city has to pass one, a resolution saying that you agree to the JPA agreement, and two, hold two readings of the CCE ordinance. So it's two documents that you have to pass. The first Board of Directors meeting will be in March of this year, and we plan to start serving customers of Phase One in October of this year. And so just over general upcoming dates, we have two final advisory committee meetings where we'll be discussing the implementation plan, the PC board of directors meeting, and like I said, we plan to launch in October. So we have a website, www.pennsylacleanenergy.com, both for great resources for your council and also for any residents in the audience that want to learn more about this. And we also have an email, and I'd be happy to answer any further questions you have. Thank you so much for your time.
All right. Thank you, Krista. Council members, any questions for?
I do. I, I had one. Thank you so much for the presentation. Of course, I think all of us, I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I'll say all of us, that I think we're all very supportive of the idea of community choice energy. The one question I had is, you know, when you're talking about hydropower up at the Pacific Northwest or, you know, purchasing, you know, where you purchase clean energy from, so to speak. And I'm not sure if you can answer this, if it's something that needs to be hammered out, but say they got a really good deal, a penny of water, something like that on this solar energy in Texas. Do they pay for it at the generation source or at the receiving source? I mean, when you negotiate a contract. And I'll tell you where I'm going with this.
The rate savings?
Not the rate savings, what, what you pay, you know, because when you purchase power, that power's got to be transmitted, okay? And if you're using transmission lines, which is what PG&E has, there's transmission line loss. So if you're purchasing power from way over somewhere else, do you pay for it at the source or do you pay for it when the power arrives?
You pay for, I see what you're saying. You pay for it at the source.
Okay.
So in California, we're part of this grid called the Western Electricity Coordinating Council. And it's actually a shockingly big area, includes all the way up to a really small part of Canada and Mexico, and then California out to some of the kind of Midwest states. So that's actually everywhere that we're allowed to get energy from without having to pay additional costs. So when we're negotiating these contracts, the price is what we're getting at that place, not for additional line loss.
Okay, because, so the line loss and what you actually get on the receiving end as a group is less than what you pay for as a line loss.
Oh, the amount of electricity?
Yes.
Correct. There is a certain amount of line loss, though, like I said, it's not, whatever goes in, you can't really track where it's going. So the line loss isn't actually as big as it probably seems because it's, we're not really transmitting energy, kind of not, from Texas to California. It's kind of going on to this one big grid and then distributed more locally.
Kind of like putting money into a bank, right? We talked about that concept.
Yeah, so that's a really good analogy. So it's like putting money into ATM. So you put money into it at one place and then you can take it out at another place and, but it's different money, but it's same, you're still the same customer.
The credit?
The credit, yeah.
It's the check and balance, then. Say you're purchasing, let's say, for instance, 100% clean energy. How do you know that's what you're getting then?
You're not.
That's a question I get a lot. I mean, part, one of the benefits I really see of this program too is the transparency aspect because this will run as a public agency under Brown Act, then all the documents will be public for people to see. And I think you just have to believe in the commitment that Peninsula Clean Energy is trying to drive more renewable energy development.
Yeah.
And we wouldn't want anything less than that.
I guess I'm not as concerned about the JPA.
Oh, the developer.
Who you're purchasing the power from. Because, I mean, the whole, the whole goal, I mean, is, I mean, I think it's twofold. One is to lower energy costs, but I think more importantly is to lower greenhouse gas emissions.
Yeah. I think on that level, the California Independent System Operator and also some of the other state-level energy, I guess, regulatory agencies are more the people that permit these type of operations and oversee them. So you do have to get like a certain amount of permitting and regulation to go through to be an electricity, like provider, so to speak. We'll also be hiring, they're called EPS, Electricity Provider Specialists, and they'll be actually the person, kind of the liaison between Peninsula Clean Energy and these big project developers. And so there, it would really kind of be their job to ensure that we're getting people that are regulated, that are, that are building these big, actual 100% renewable energy facilities.
So quick question that kind of piggybacks on this. So I noticed Marin has 100% local solar option. And so is that what, is that to kind of mitigate this whole idea of when you are purchasing the 100% renewable is essentially like almost a credit into the system and it's not necessarily getting to your house, but the 100% local solar is going at least into your local area, renewable energy in your local area? Is that what that means?
Not as much. So people do like the idea of local distributed energy because there is less line loss. So it's true that on the line loss side, it is nice to have more local renewable energy. I think the benefit for them was really to have local jobs. To have that project built in Marin County, be a Marin County project. People do like the idea of having more local energy because of security as well. There's a concept known as the microgrid, the idea that you would have all your power where you need it. And if the rest of the grid started failing, you could kind of cut yourself off. Cities are a long way from ever doing that, but I feel like maybe some of these people like Marin who are really forward-thinking are maybe thinking in that direction.
Do you have any more questions, Madison?
Yeah, I actually have one more.
Because I think Clark, you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Sorry, I was just trying to piggyback off what you're saying.
I know you're excited.
Sorry. Okay.
Exciting topic.
So my last question was on, my last question was on the excess funds that you were talking about that go back into the community. And that was something that was really interesting to me. And I was wondering if you could speak to somebody like Marin who's had this for now five or six years, what they've actually done in their community with that, those excess funds?
Yeah, so they're, so in the short term, they've used it for energy efficiency programs. The idea is to have energy efficiency programs that are more tailored to the communities they serve. And they're supposed to complement PG&E's energy efficiency programs, not compete with them. But the big way they really use it is they actually are building their first Marin Clean Energy-owned project, like we said, solar project in Richmond. So they saved a lot of that money to do that project. They also partnered with Tesla when the Tesla Power Wall for electric vehicles first came out. So they got a certain amount of Tesla Power Walls for their customers.
Great. Sorry, Clark. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Oh, was Clark done?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
I have one question.
So the, the thought process is to have a weighted or possibly a weighted board of directors with population? How would that affect a small city such as Brisbane that's got so few customers?
So most of those will actually be done on a one vote per one city basis. So Brisbane would get one vote, Redwood City would get one vote. The weighted voting only comes in if somebody calls for it and it's based on your electricity load. This is a common practice that's used in Marin and Sonoma, and I believe it's only been used once in Sonoma and never in Marin. I might give those mixed up. It is a common concern we hear from some of our smaller cities. I would say that, I mean, I don't see it as a practice that would be used a lot and especially based on the experience in Marin and Sonoma. And that supermajority piece in the JPA agreement was put in so the smaller cities could still have a voice, like kind of banding together. The idea wasn't that the biggest, more electricity user cities would be able to make the big decisions.
Do you want to add anything to that?
I'm sorry, I was.
The voting rule in the JPA agreement?
Yeah. So what was the question? I'm sorry.
Just to elaborate on the weighted voting.
Sure. Yeah, actually, good evening. My name is David Silverman. I'm a chief deputy county council for the county of San Mateo. And just to, not correct, but there was something that.
That's why you're here.
I, I wanted to modify. So the super, the supermajority issue and the weighted voting issue are two completely different things. The supermajority issue is designed to require a higher vote for particularly, you know, potentially controversial issues like amending the JPA agreement, in the unlikely event that the JPA ever wanted to use eminent domain, those sorts of things. There are three or four very specific scenarios where if you wanted to pass something, you had to do supermajority. The weighted voting was something that we actually borrowed from both Sonoma and Marin. These are, this is a, a voting scheme that they had in their JPAs. We didn't simply rubber stamp it. We took it to the advisory committee and, and discussed it with the advisory committee. But the idea was, is like you could have a, a JPA like ours where hopefully we have all of the cities. We've got 20 cities. And we're going to have some cities, like, you know, for example, the city of Brisbane, that might not have as many customers as, say, the city of Redwood City or the city of Daly City. And the idea was, well, should the city of Brisbane have the exact same vote as the city of Redwood City? And the answer is yes, you absolutely do have the exact same vote as the city of Redwood City. But if there was something that was really controversial and there was an issue of large cities versus small cities, we wanted to give some equity to the large cities so that they would be able to stop something, not force something on the smaller cities, but stop something that they thought was bad for them. And the idea behind that was just, again, one of equity. I, I don't want to say this is a meaningless provision because if it was, we wouldn't have put it in there. But I will observe that in the history of both Sonoma and Marin, it's never been utilized. I mean, it's really just a prophylactic in there to give folks, both small cities and large cities, the, the confidence that neither the large cities or the small cities will dominate the JPA. Is that, does that kind of make sense? The, the weighted voting is based on the amount of energy use in that jurisdiction. So say, for example, the city of Redwood City had 10% of the energy users in the JPA. If they called for weighted voting, you would need 50% of the weighted vote, 50% of the energy users to approve something that the JPA was going to do.
50 or 51?
50, 50.0000. Fifty, 50.0000, 001%. Yeah. But again, I mean, it really is, I think it's more of a theoretical issue than a practical one.
And that's, how, how does 50% plus one equal a supermajority rather than just a majority?
You know, that's exactly right. So that, that's why the supermajority thing and the, and the, and the, and the weighted voting are separate, although they do interact. I really don't want to overcomplicate this, but let me take it out of the abstract. Let's say the JPA board, actually, I'll take it even more out of the abstract. The city of San Mateo, which is one of the cities that's already approved for this, has indicated that they don't like, or at least a couple of the members of the city council indicated they didn't like one of the provisions in the JPA agreement. Specifically, the JPA agreement has, has a provision that one member, the, the primary member on the JPA board must be an elected official, but the alternate member can be a member of city staff. The city of San Mateo thought that both, they indicated at their meeting, that they thought that both of the members should both be elected officials, both the alternate and the, and the, and the primary representative. And so if they were to, at a meeting, propose amending the JPA agreement to require that both the representative and the alternate are, both must be elected officials, that would need a two-third majority, supermajority vote to pass. If at that point it was going to pass and someone didn't like that and they wanted to call a weighted vote, at that point, in addition to having a two-third majority vote, it would also have to approve by a two-third weighted vote.
Two-thirds of the energy users?
Correct.
Or the voting representatives for those users?
Exactly. So I hope I haven't completely overcomplicated this, but.
Well, two-thirds makes more sense than 50% plus one.
Yep.
For a supermajority.
You got it.
So how do you obtain the vote of those, that majority of the users?
So there is a, there's a formula in the JPA agreement. It is in section 3.7.1 that talks about voting shares. And basically what they do is they take the total energy use for the entire JPA, all of the members of the JPA, and then they take the energy use in the jurisdiction and they create a, a fraction. So for example, to very simplify it, there's 10 customers, one of them is in Redwood City. So one out of 10, they get 10%.
Okay.
And just, I, I want to make clear, I've, I've been paying attention. There's a meeting going on in Belmont right now and I was asked a question about what was asked in Belmont and I was responding to that. So I was still doing CCA as I was, was listening.
Only billing once.
So customers who perhaps come into the system and then, and then go back out of the system, the exit fee is a constant on that bill?
Exit fee is only a constant while they're a CCE customer. So say the customer was started with Peninsula Clean Energy, decided to go back to PG&E, they would no longer pay it at the point they decided to go back to PG&E. If they then decided to come back to Peninsula Clean Energy, they would start paying that fee again.
And how would, or how would it be possible for customers who, you know, probably many of them don't really study their bill, know whether being in the community choice program was good comparatively or not good?
Yeah. It's true that a lot of people do not read their bill, which is why we sometimes call this a change that you never notice because some people may never notice it. But the, that is why they have those mandatory notices that go to all electricity customers. So they'll receive a minimum of four, will probably do five notices in the mail before the program starts, telling them of their options. We're also planning on doing a really heavy marketing campaign that will start in about June and go through program launch. So we'll have bus ads and television ads and newspaper ads. So hopefully more people start learning about the program.
But I, I meant as an ongoing.
Oh, from year to year.
This look, you know, when you get your bill, knowing if you're benefiting or not benefiting by cost-wise. We all know that more energy efficiency is, is better.
So in a month.
How will people know?
Yeah, so on a month-to-month basis, they will have to look at the PG&E website and compare it to the Peninsula Clean Energy website. But on an annual basis, all CCEs release, they call it, it's not a joint cost comparison, but that's pretty much what it is. They, they release a note to all the electricity customers showing what the PG&E rates are and then showing what the CCE rates are. So on an annual basis, customers will receive that information directly.
And that will include the transmission exit fees, all costs?
I believe it includes the exit fees as well, yeah. The transmission fees are the same regardless of what customer you are. So I'm not sure if they include that because it might confuse people. But it'll definitely show, it definitely shows the generation differences. And I believe it also shows the differences in what the renewable energy content is.
And then on, on your comparison for the, the mix of power that they, that you have listed for PG&E and for Marin Clean Energy and the Sonoma Energy, does that? Does that include the ongoing changes that PG&E is being required to bring their renewables up?
Yes, so as far as like where they are above PG&E?
No, no, what the, what the state government is mandating that PG&E achieves over a certain period or.
Amount of time. Yeah, so our, our study did look at that. Right now PG&E is 27% and they're mandated to be 50% by 2030. And that ruling came out, I believe, as we're in the middle of our technical study. So we did think about the fact that there will be more increased demand for renewable energy over time. And also just market demand. I mean, that's actually one of the benefits of community choice energy programs is that it's creating this competition for PG&E and kind of forcing them to be more renewable because now there's another entity.
So the, the scenario too has always been that we, this group, this entity would expect to be a higher percentage of renewables and lower greenhouse gas than PG&E, even as their mandates go up. The CCAs mandates would go up.
Exactly. We always plan to be more, more sustainable, have cleaner energy than PG&E. We never promise that our rates will always be cheaper than PG&E. We always say it'd be competitive. So at times it may go up a little more and at times it may be a little less. We're definitely going to launch with less, but we can't guarantee that'll be always be it. But it'll always be more renewable.
And then part of the success of the three groups that you've listed on here is the current CCAs have areas of generation within their system?
Yeah.
So there's geothermal in Sonoma, Marin's building their new program over in Richmond. How can San Mateo County compete with that as a JPA with generation?
Yeah, so there's a, a couple of ways to do that. They're actually also following the models in Marin and Sonoma. One is something called a feed-in tariff program, which incentivizes third-party developers to come in or in the county or out of the county, but you can decide what you're going to prioritize and build new renewable energy contracts. So the, the CCE isn't paying for that, but they are the sole purchasers of that energy. So the project was built on their behalf. Feed-in tariffs also incentivize larger onsite renewable energy projects. So not just like a home, but say a really big business or someone decided to do a really large renewable energy project and they had excess energy they wanted to sell to Peninsula Clean Energy, they would benefit from that feed-in tariff program. The second way is net energy metering, which is actually something that's currently available through PG&E for solar customers. So solar customers who have more energy than they use can sell it back to the grid for a certain amount. And current CCEs provide about 10, 10 times more per kilowatt hour than PG&E currently offers. So it's a way to really heavily incentivize residential solar projects. Other than that, it's still a little far out to kind of imagine where our renewable energy products will be. I mean, I know you guys have the Baylands, which would be a really good possibility. There's also maybe some superfund sites or landfills. We understand that land in San Mateo County is obviously expensive and rare to come by, but I think there are some good options in our county that we can look at.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. So just to piggyback on what we were talking about with the net energy metering. So I know we touched on this briefly at the advisory board meetings about what happens if you're an existing, you know, customer that has solar on your roof and you get this true-up at the end of the year where, you know, you kind of, you can get a check. What happens if we join PCE before that time happens?
Yeah, that's a good question. We actually get a lot of questions about solar customers. So the answer is that you can definitely move your solar panels from PG&E to PCE, so to speak. You don't have to get a new agreement with whoever installed the panels on your house. And you get that true-up at the time that you leave PG&E. So for example, if you leave PG&E in June, you would get six months worth of what that true-up was. So you still get whatever financial amount PG was going to own, owe you.
Okay. And then any excess energy you, at that point, you would sell to the PCE?
Moving forward, yes.
Moving forward.
You would sell to Peninsula Clean Energy.
Would Peninsula Clean Energy have a similar true-up system on an annual basis?
Actually, we haven't decided the details of it. I believe current CCEs actually true-up on a monthly basis, which is a benefit. So customers are seeing more immediate return from their solar bills. Those kind of program details will be made by the JPA board, probably in spring when we kind of hammer out the details of these solar programs and some of our other programs. We actually just finished, because we get so many questions about solar customers, we just finished our frequently asked questions sheet just for net energy metering and solars. And I brought some with me tonight. I left them outside the door, but I can also give it to you after. And those might answer some additional questions you may have.
Great. And one more question. So can you talk about the, or expand on the benefits of joining the JPA early rather than waiting?
Yeah. So I see the biggest benefit is the decision-making. So most of the biggest decisions, such as what the energy projects, products are going to be, what programs you're going to offer, what the marketing's going to look like, all those really big decisions are going to be made at the beginning of the program. And so as, especially small cities have worries about how their input into this, I think for small cities, joining at the beginning is probably the best option because there are, all those big program decisions are being made now. And then the secondary, but maybe for cities, the bigger one is that there's just no cost to join right now and there may be a cost later on. And to clarify, that cost is for two things. One, whenever a new customer or city joins Peninsula Clean Energy, there has to be analysis done on how their electricity load affects Peninsula Clean Energy. So the cost is to pay for that analysis. And then every time a new city joins Peninsula Clean Energy, you have to resubmit the implementation plan. So it's just to cover administrative costs for that. It's not supposed to be a cost barrier. I think in current CCEs, it's about like $5,000 to $8,000. So it's not supposed to be a huge hurdle, but it is something to think about.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Krista. I have a, a few questions for you. Can, can you talk a little bit more about the locations of where you would purchase this energy? So you talked about, you know, some of the, the hydro projects up in the northwest, maybe perhaps solar out in the desert regions of Southern California. But it's, it's a much wider territory than just California. So, but where would you get most of the energy?
I think most of the energy would come in California. So those decisions haven't been made yet. But if you look really in detail at the technical study, they made certain assumptions, which also correlate to the price. So they, they assume that over the next, I think it's like 10 years, we're going to get 200 megawatts of additional solar and all of that would come from the Central Valley. So would be in California. The geothermal energy would most likely come from Sonoma's geysers. The wind energy is a little less iffy because there's wind projects all throughout the state. It probably still would be in California. I believe it is sometimes cheaper to purchase in California, depending on what the energy prices are at the time. And then, as I pointed out before, you pointed out the large hydroelectric would have to probably come from the Pacific Northwest because we don't have enough water to produce hydroelectric. So the short answer is we don't know right now. It depends when we go out to the market. But those are some of the assumptions that our technical advisors made in the study.
Okay. And then you talked about being competitive with PG&E. So when you're talking about being competitive, you're comparing PG&E's option of providing alternative energy or are you talking about all energy that PG&E provides?
Uh, both. So we're talking about one, rates, and two, I guess, more the renewable energy content of their energy. So like currently, we all receive 27% of our energy is coming from renewable energy sources.
Yeah, okay. And that 27%, we're not asking for it, it's just mandated?
It's just mandated, it's there. They do have a new 100% renewable option that is coming out, but it's limited to a certain amount of residents and it's more expensive. I believe the option is 50-100%, so similar to current CCEs. But both of them are more expensive than what your regular rate would be as a PG&E customer.
Yeah, you know, I was at a board supervisor's meeting. And I think it might have been the first meeting where folks from Marin and Sonoma were giving a presentation and they had the slides that showed the different pricing structures from PG&E and what Marin and Sonoma were, were offering. And both Marin and, well, especially Sonoma was offering a much more competitive rate than, than PG&E could offer. And they could offer alternative energy at a cheaper rate than, you know, fossil fuel energy sources that PG&E was providing.
Exactly. And that is the goal for our program as well.
Okay. So if we're competing with PG&E and, and, but the bills come from PG&E, all the infrastructure's from PG&E. So then, you know, how does PG&E stay in business if, if more customers keep going to a different source?
So PG&E is considered the utility of last resort. I think that's kind of a nickname. But the CPUC ensures that PG&E will continue operations. In case something does happen to any CCEs, that they'll automatically be able to go back to PG&E. So there's kind of that firewall there. But also PG&E actually makes most of this money from the distribution side of electricity, not the generation side. And they're still getting funds from everyone's distribution, whether you're PG&E or PCE. So they're actually still making a profit off electricity customers.
Okay, so in a sense, what you're doing is you're, you're kind of, kind of pushing the issue to use alternative energy. And where PG&E might be a little bit slow in doing it, you're, you're, yeah, you're.
Exactly. It's a stance of kind of saying, we want to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions for electricity generation now. You're not going fast enough, so we're going to create this entity that's going to do it faster than you.
Okay.
I mean, there's some of the other added benefits, like the reserve funds and the local control, but that kind of is the heart of it.
Okay, so any, any publicity that PG&E puts out there saying that they're, you know, this is going to hurt them and it will raise rates and all, that, that's probably not very accurate then?
I wouldn't think so. They actually, so when Marin County, it took them seven years to start their CCE program. And part of that is because there is really heavy marketing from PG&E against it. After the end of the whole kind of Marin thing and they did start operating, the states decided, I don't know if it was like a law those places, CPUC regulation, but they cannot use ratepayer funds to advocate against CCE programs. So they can advertise themselves and say, we're here and we benefit your community, but they can't say bad things about CCE programs.
Okay. And so have you seen any data that, that shows PG&E lost money since Marin and Sonoma went into?
I have, I have not.
Okay.
Yeah. I would say too that it's, even though PG&E and PCE would be kind of competitors on the generation side, they're also a working partnership. So like you said, they still have to work together for customer bills, they still have to work together with customer service. The customer may call PCE if their line is down and they have to forward the call onto PG&E. They still work together.
Sure. So what percentage of customers do you need to be viable?
I don't think it's, like, if a certain amount of customers left the program.
No.
Or how many cities?
Get up and running, yeah. Well, you know, so you have these different cities and then, then within the cities there are the customers.
Honestly, we could have done it with the county unincorporated and maybe two cities. Right now, we're at the county unincorporated and six. Right now, we're at the county unincorporated and six cities. Seven cities.
Okay.
So we're already at a critical mass. The critical mass is actually really small. Like remember Lancaster is just one city and they did it on their own. But we would like to have a lot of the cities join us in this program.
Okay, great.
It's not necessity. It's just, we want you guys to do it.
Sure.
Just by comparison, when Marin launched, they had 7,000 customers. So actually, one of the things that really surprised me in learning about this, I had to see that there was a scaling issue. It's really not a scaling issue. When, when we're talking on that slide about the opt-out risk, I believe that what we're talking about is, we have to go out to market and do an RFP and purchase energy before we know what the actual opt-out rate is. So, I mean, there is some risk that we might have more folks opt out and we buy too much energy. But the opt-out percentages that are assumed in the study are actually fairly conservative compared to what, you know, we've seen most recently with Sonoma. It's really, it's not, it doesn't appear that there's a scaling issue at all.
Yeah. We assume 15%, but Marin, well, Sonoma is closer to like 9, 10%. And we think our customers will probably be at the same range.
Okay. You know, so the Marin 100% solar. So can you talk a little bit about that?
Um.
Curious about it, you know, how to make that happen?
How it works? So I honestly know a little about it, but I can get more information for you if you want. I know they used it, they did it from reserve funds. They actually got just from the 100% renewable energy customers. So it wasn't even from just the normal customers they built that from. It was just reserves from their 100% renewable energy customers. They saved that money up over about five years. And then were able to build a solar project in Richmond, one of their service territories.
Okay. So it's in the city of Richmond. In, in creating this solar facility in Richmond, were there any, you know, revenue studies? You know, I'm just curious to know, you know, were there any negative impacts to the city of Richmond for-
That's an interesting question.
-allowing this solar facility to occur and-
I'm not-
Had to give up something.
Yeah. I'm not sure. I can't talk to them because I actually have to talk to them about something else, too. I know that the land was actually put on Chevron, Chevron land that was either donated, they got really cheap, but I don't know that a direct impact to Richmond themselves.
That's a green company.
Yeah.
They say they are.
All right. Well, thank you very much. Any follow-up questions from Council?
I have one more. Just say all 20 cities or Brisbane joins and JPA happens. What's the outreach for the customers? Say like citizens of Brisbane want to get their power from Peninsula Clean Energy versus PG&E? What's the mechanics of that?
Well, they're automatically enrolled. They get those enrollment notices. So the notices basically say, this is coming. These are what the options are going to look like. If you don't want to be part of this, this is how you unenroll from the program. And starting in about June, we'll set up a call center that for a while will be available 24/7 and multiple options for people to call at any time and get information about it.
So by us, the city joining the JPA, it automatically makes the citizens join it?
Correct.
That's the mechanics, okay.
Yeah, that's the mechanic.
Right now, I don't, I don't purchase my power from PG&E. That's part of, you know, the deregulation. I don't buy power from PG&E. They deliver it, but, you know, I buy it from somebody else. I've been doing that for years.
Oh, well, there you go.
Yeah. I mean, it's, those programs are out there, too. So.
Yeah.
Yeah. But this is specifically, so everybody goes and then each individual customer in Brisbane then has an, an option of choosing where they want to go with it.
Yeah. So they have the option to opt out of the program, back to their default provider.
Okay. So there's got to be a lot of outreach as far as.
Yeah.
I mean, it could be, you know, a big whipsaw, like, hey, how could you guys make this decision for me, you know?
That is exactly what I'm trying to avoid. I've been doing a lot of the marketing outreach communications portion. So we're in the process right now of hiring a professional marketing outreach consultant that will create a marketing outreach plan, bring it to the JPA Board and start implementing it probably in like April, June, May, June time. And so there'll be, all over the summer, there'll be a huge marketing campaign about this. So when a customer receives their first opt-out notice, it shouldn't be a surprise, hopefully.
So.
What? A pleasant surprise?
I have, I have one follow-up question on that. How is the JPA funding the massive campaign?
So the, all the startup costs have been funded by the county. The idea that the county is going to get paid back within the first couple of years of operation of Peninsula Clean Energy.
And what kind of funding have they put into this massive marketing campaign?
Well, so they've done kind of buckets of funding and then we've been kind of divvying it up into different things. So part of the funding went towards the tech study. Some of it's going to the marketing consultant. Some of it's been going to our other consultants. We have program consultants and we have graphic design and website consultants right now. So the first tranche of money was 30,000 and the second was 800,000. And I think we're going to go back to them potentially for a little bit more. And that will kind of round off the numbers. So in the end, we think the total cost will be about 1.5 million that the county has spent and then will be paid back.
So they're, they're doing the upfront costs of about 1.5 million?
Correct, yes.
Or 132nd Super Bowl ad?
Hopefully, our ads won't be that expensive.
Going back to Clark's question, so the customers will be opted into the program. And then what scenario would they go into? Would it be the 50% renewable or what?
So we would choose some default scenario. It'll definitely look something around the 50%. We're actually exploring right now if we can maybe push that maybe to 55 or 60 and seeing what the price differential will be. If it's only a teeny bit more, like a couple cents for each customer each month, that would be worth it to reduce their greenhouse gas emissions. So that's something that the, we'll be talking about the advisory committee next, this Thursday.
It is.
And next month. And then also be a final decision by the JPA Board, probably sometime in March. And then we also, the JPA Board will also decide whether to have the 100% renewable option, which we are pretty sure that they will do. So you'll have two options.
Yeah, because if you can just talk a little bit more about that. So say, say the advisory group or chooses scenario two and three. So then the customer, then they choose two or three?
Yeah. So you're automatically enrolled in the default, which would be two, or something that looks like two.
Okay.
With the option to pay a little more and have the 100%.
Okay. So then, you know, say a customer chooses scenario three, you're going to guarantee that all electricity that comes into their house is going to be 100%.
It's not the electricity coming into their house. It's the energy being purchased on their behalf.
Goes into the pool.
Yes.
Okay. So then what they, what that customer is doing is they're, they're making an investment in the overall scheme of things that we want to bring 100% renewable energy to the base.
Yes. That's a very good way to put it.
All right. Okay. Are, is, are you guys going to make that clear to people when you're sending out information to them?
Yeah, that's a good point. Definitely. Like the concept that it won't be 100% in their house. Yeah, there's definitely a lot of education that has to go on. Like as people noted, people don't even read their electricity bill, much less think about how their electricity gets to their house. So it'll be a daunting effort to kind of explain to people what the difference between distribution and generation is and the concept that this 100% renewable won't be, you know, aligned to the solar plant down the road. It's going to be purchased somewhere else and put into the pool on your behalf.
All right. I mean, you know, I mean, we're getting it because we're here on the dais.
Yeah.
Folks in the audience, okay, they're listening. They'll get it. But, you know, I think it's, you're going to need quite a bit of.
Oh, yeah. I definitely agree with you.
Education to make sure that that is, is clear.
Yeah, I agree.
I am a clean electron.
All right. Any other questions?
So on the generation side from solar customers, like if you're a residential or commercial customer, the energy that you generate and then sell back to the CCE, where does that go?
That goes also just onto the grid. You just kind of have to think about it as it goes onto the grid and kind of just like gets put all together. You can't trace where it goes.
Okay. Not onto the, onto the grid that is from PG&E or the CCE's pool?
Um, so there's no differentiation between PG&E and PCE's pool on the grid.
Okay.
All right. And, you know, I do have just one last question.
Yes.
So, so any alternative energy that's generated within San Mateo County, there's no guarantee that that money, I mean, that electricity or that energy would stay in the county. It's going to be out there for everybody.
It depends on the way the transformers in your area work. The, the grid itself is kind of a series of different transformers and lines of different sizes. So some of them decrease the intensity of energy and some of them increase it. So a simple answer would be, it depends on how the grid in your area is structured. It would probably stay somewhere in the county. It may not stay somewhere in your city, especially if you have a smaller city. You may only have one transformer somewhere else. If that makes sense.
No, that makes sense. Okay. Thank you very much. All right.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We now have one more city, Belmont, to just approve it. So now we're up four.
All right.
Another B city.
So tonight, we have a workshop. It's not a public hearing. But if there are folks in the audience that would like to, to give their support or have concerns, you know, now's the time. I don't have any slips, but if you want to raise your hand and, and if you could stay within a five-minute time period, that would be very appreciative. Okay. So we'll start from the front here. Glenn?
I'm Glenn Fieldman, resident of Brisbane. And I think this is really an exciting thing, but I do have a couple of questions about it. One of them is, will the-
Glenn, thank you.
I'll hear you.
Will there be any provision to encourage people to save energy connected with this plan? Because, you know, renewable energy is great, but it still has an environmental impact. And I'm, one paradoxical result that could come from this is, you know, as you have a lot more renewables onto the grid, joining with the fossil fuel energy that's already on the grid, the price of energy goes down and that encourages people to use more of it. So I think I'm a little bit concerned about perverse results. And I don't know whether that's something that this entity could control. But one of the ways that it might think about doing that is to have tiered electricity charges, maybe more rigorously than PG&E now does it. In fact, PG&E, I was just reading today, PG&E has actually cut down their tiering from four groups to three. And, and they're actually kind of moving away from that. But I think we should move toward it. So that's one question. Are we going to incentivize people to save energy to use less? And I also have a personal interest in that. My current electricity bill from PG&E is $11 a month. I'm very careful about how I use it. So, so if I switch to 100% renewable, I'm, I'm actually going to double my electricity bill because I will have to pay this exit fee, which will roughly double my, my electricity bill. And, you know, I'll, I'll probably swallow and go ahead and do that. But it, it is kind of perverse in that this exit fee is going to fall the hardest on the people who use the least. In other words, my electricity bill will double as a result of this fee, whereas somebody who uses, you know, $100 a month's worth of electricity is going to be paying 10% more, which I realize is not under our control, but it is something to bring up maybe with the CPUC if that time comes. The second thing I'm concerned about is there are renewables and renewables. And there are a lot of people who argue, I think with some justification, that large hydro is really not the sort of electricity source we should be looking at. It's got a lot of bad environmental effects. And again, perverse consequences. We have a lot of community choice aggregation programs and they're all trying to buy renewables. Are we suddenly going to have a big lobby group pushing to dam the rivers in the Western United States that aren't dammed yet so we can buy the hydro power? And so I guess my question would be, is the board, the, the JPA Board, is, is it going to have, is it going to make up guidelines for the purchase of renewable energy? Is there some sort of template for that? It's not really clear to me. Is there a definition for renewable energy already? If so, what is it? Is there any way to tweak those guidelines or to ask further questions? I mean, and, and other people have asked questions about large solar in Southern California. Yvonne Pa has, has been pretty heavily criticized for being built on top of a lot of endangered desert tortoise habitat and so forth. So I don't think this one CCA is, is going to be able to swing that. But if you have a lot of CCA's, and that's clearly the way this is going, the pressure for anything called renewable energy could result in some really bad environmental choices. And I'm just a little bit concerned about that. And I'll leave it there. Thank you.
All right. Yeah. Thank you, Glenn.
Just, I don't think, I don't know if Glenn was here, but I think the presenter said that hydroelectric is not considered a renewable energy. Did you say that?
Yes.
Yeah. Hydroelectric is not considered a renewable.
Sure. I mean, do you want answers to those questions?
If we could.
Yeah, yeah, that'd be nice. Thanks.
So incentive programs, it's up to the JPA Board, what they do as far as like the, the various tiered charges, what the, what the CC programs have done is they've tended to do what PG&E does. But the JPA Board can make a different decision. It's actually kind of the same answer for everything, except for the exit fee is actually calculated based on actual energy use. So you're not paying the same exit fee, no matter.
It's not a flat rate?
No, it's not a flat rate.
Okay, that's good. Thank you for the clarification. Okay.
And then she's absolutely right. Large hydro is not considered a renewable, a renewable source. As was discussed earlier, when you talk about environmental impacts, you're talking about GHG or carbon, and you're talking about renewable. So the reason why large hydro is used is because it's considered GHG-free, but it's not considered renewable.
Mission free, yeah.
The, the JPA Board, again, and this, to go back to why it's beneficial to be one of the founding members, you know, these are the kind of decisions that the JPA Board gets to make. What kind of energy it wants to purchase, from whom?
Yes.
Those are the core policy questions that the JPA Board gets to answer.
Yeah, you know, that's good. You know, one of the things that Glenn, you know, that, you know, was very important about bringing up was, was the sustainability of the energy, right? I mean, one can, this is your department. And so you could have this idea of sustainability because you're, you're creating this, you know, non-emission alternative energy. But then what, what are the other costs, either to the environment or social equity? And so, yeah, I mean, there's, I think the Sierra Club came out with something in regards to solar farms.
Yeah.
And that perhaps, you know, solar farms aren't the, the best thing. Just like when we were taking corn and turning it into fuel, and then there was a, a food crisis throughout the world. Perhaps solar is better on buildings and, you know, incorporating infill that, that already exists.
Yeah. David did a great job answering all the questions. I just want to add one small thing that she asked about is what's the definition, what are the guidelines we're going to use? That will be decided by the JPA Board. But the definition of renewable is actually set by the state. So there's a very specific guidelines of what is or isn't considered renewable and what we can say is renewable legally. And so those aren't determined by the Community Choice Energy Program. That's considered by the state. And it's the same standard for CCEs or PG&E. It's part of the renewable portfolio standard.
Okay. Thank you. Anya?
It's a nice meeting for once. As you may know, I'm a member of the San Mateo County Community Choice Advocacy Group. And I'm happy to say that that group actually met here in Brisbane for the first time last week. And they've been working very hard and I'm very happy for the whole concept of government here that we have. It's just really a great work. Government can work together and with the leadership of a county. We used to have, the county didn't care about Brisbane a bit, but now we have a joint effort here where all the cities are equal. And a county takes a leadership, even fronting the money. So you don't have to put anything in your budget. It's all taken care of with good leadership, good, all the studies are done, you know? You didn't have to have any of that on your agendas, how we do this feasibility. of that on your agendas, how we do this feasibility studies, so on. And they did prepare the ordinance. We've had other examples on the smoking ordinance, how the county can really do the legwork. And they've done it here with the ordinances. And so this is such a good example. Plus, we have the legislation now, of course, as you've heard, California PUC is a real problem unit here, and they are under heavy influence by by PG&E, who is trying to fight this whole process. Of course, it's competition, you know. And the problem with, you can't go to the PUC, California PUC, and and talk like we do here. You have to be a leg legal party. It's a definition of how they can participate, how you can participate in any of their considerations. So the PUC is a real problem. But we do have legislators such as our Senator Hill, who is a real champion of of renewable energy and fighting PUC and promoting transparency in the PUC. So we're talking to him and we're the California, the San Mateo County Community Choice Group is going to be with Supervisor Pine to talk about some of the legislative strategy we need it because it's Sacramento is a different ball of wax. One of the goals I didn't hear too much talking about now is the distributed energy. And that is locally generated locally using, like we have our PG&E substation right here in Brisbane, and we have a chance to really cut the transmission loss, which is average 7%, average 7% loss of energy in transmission. And of course, a security aspect. So I would say that this is really sounds good. I don't really have any questions because, again, the staff, the Sustainability Office of the county is just a really, really good unit that's doing good work. They're all over the place. And here we have, again, a demonstration of how something like that can benefit all. And and I'm glad that you're gonna move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Anya. All right, I saw Greg. Did you want to, did you want to say something, Greg? Oh, okay, good. Jonathan?
Thank you. Jonathan Scherfman, San Mateo County resident, and I I work in Brisbane and run some businesses here. I think this terrific program, and I'm really, really proud personally to be someone who will take advantage of it and and hope that our businesses will as well. Just one question on the eligible renewable sources. There's a, there's a list on, in the presentation that lists two, four, five sources. My question, my question has to do with what the process would be for adding emerging technologies to those sources because that's, that's been something that's been discussed a lot.
Are you talking about this list, Jonathan?
Yes, sir.
Oh.
A list from the presentation. So so is is there a process by which new eligible renewable sources would be added? And what would that process be? Is there, there's, there's been a long-standing discussion here in Brisbane about emerging technologies that that may, in fact, replace some of, some of the existing ones. So if if that would be addressed, that'd be great.
Sure, sure. Is that going to be in the unspecified?
Well, unspecified, I think, is actually a little different.
Okay.
So I'm not sure what the exact process is in Marin and Sonoma for adding new technologies, and I'm not sure how that would work under the JPA. I can tell you that the way it works in Marin and Sonoma is in addition to their long-term contracts, they have an annual kind of bidding process where they say, we want, we need, for example, 20 megawatts of solar energy. And solar developers can give them basically bids, and then they go through that and decide what they're going to do. So I am imagining that if they wanted, say, oh, wave technology just got, you know, really good, they could, on that annual bidding process, say, okay, now we want wave technology. I don't know, other than that, if they have a specific process for new technologies. But it could be something that we obviously could look at. And because the Board of Directors meetings are all public, any member that, member of the public maybe is interested in this or has information emerging technologies could share that.
So wouldn't that be emerging technologies to be on PG&E's power mix to qualify for renewable? Wouldn't it have to be the state authorized type of renewable?
That's true. So the the PC could decide to contract with emerging technology that maybe wasn't considered renewable yet. But if they thought it was greenhouse gas-free or more sustainable, they could still do it. So they wouldn't get, they wouldn't be able to market it as a renewable resource until it was branded, I guess, by the state as renewable. But they could say, we're contracting for wave, or we're contracting for a new greenhouse gas-free type of renewable source that they could legally say.
Thank you.
All right. Barbara?
Hello, Barbara Ebel. Just two things. One, I had a chance to talk to the gentleman from Lancaster during the Climate Action Planning Conference. And he and his, his municipality are so excited, and they are just, they're really loving what they're doing. So I, I'd like to think that if we go ahead, we will be able to love what we're doing, too. Got high hopes for that. And then I just had a weird thought as I was listening to the presentation. And that is that it makes sense, possibly, for different cities to have different weighted votes depending on how much they draw. And the thing that conversely came into my mind, and this would be a JPA decision, not a decision for this council, but I thought it might also make sense to have a second category of weight based on generation. So if a community is producing a lot of power, that might also contribute to the weighted votes. And I thought that might be a good idea because it might encourage communities to build more local solar and to to have that voice, and that the voice might complement the, you know, the production. So that was just a thought. Thank you.
All right.
Do we ever comment on that?
Sure.
That's actually a good question. So I mean.
So what I can say about that is, so the JPA agreement's already been approved by, I guess, nine cities now. But one of the, one of the nice things about the JPA agreement is that it can be changed by the JPA board. So if any point, one of these great ideas comes up about another way to vote, be absolutely something that the JPA board could consider and and modify the JPA agreement.
All right. Thank you, Dave. Tony?
Good evening. I'm Tony Utard. Yesterday, I received this brochure in the mail, and I thought I'd share it with you because I think it's important, especially if other residents in town receive the same brochure. And it's from Arcadia Power. I don't know if you received it, but I did. And I'm just wondering if anybody else did. Arcadia, K. So it's a good point. I'm glad to bring this up to you because their, Arcadia, Arcadia Power's community, wind power, you finally have the freedom to choose 100% pollution-free wind energy. And at first, because this was only yesterday, I thought this was part of the community choice, you know, or an offshoot of it. But after hearing this wonderful presentation, I realized this is in competition with community choice. And I think it should be made clear that people understand that there are possibly other, other agencies trying to sell their power. But this is saying that it's available now 100% clean energy, 100% wind power. And at first, I thought, gee, is this part of the the community choice? But it's, it's not. It's separate. And I think people should know that, that there are, this isn't the same thing that this, we're hearing this wonderful presentation tonight. This is something different. I don't know how good it is or or not good, but I think it's important to understand that it's something else. It's another independent thing being offered. And I'm not sure if everybody in Brisbane got it, but I thought the timing was interesting. I got it yesterday, and I knew of this meeting today. So apparently, they're offering 100% wind power energy through, and through the PG&E lines, it says, and and everything. But I think people need to understand that there are other things out there as well. I think what's in front of us now with this community choice, I think, is a wonderful program. And even though, of course, I love wind power and 100%, I just don't want people to be, to misunderstand that it's not what's being presented tonight.
Thank you, Tony.
And that's, that's pretty much right. Thank you.
All right. You know, Kristen, real quick. So would there, by becoming part of the JPA, does that basically eliminate competition from others, and it's just other PG&E or the PCE?
That's a good question. I believe that they can, customers can choose other options other than just the two.
If if they opt out, they can choose what they want.
Yeah, because I, the way it's written is your incumbent utility, which for most people is PG&E. But I believe if you're on somebody else's first, then that's your incumbent utility, and you can go back to them. The Arcadia Power is an interesting model. It's a, it's a little controversial because they use something called unbundled REX, which we excluded from our portfolio, which is kind of like a whole different conversation. But there, there are definitely other options out there, including PG&E's 100% renewable option, which will be limited to a certain amount of customers. So that is very true.
I'm sorry, what was the term you used for their model?
It's called unbundled renewable energy credits, also known as unbundled REX. Unbundled REX.
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 Okay.
REC.
I could explain it, but it actually might be easier if you go. So there's a lot of information about it, but the EPA, the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency, has a video about it on, you can just get it on YouTube, I think, that explains it pretty well. Or if you just Google it, you'll find a number of different sources.
Okay.
Is it possible for you to briefly explain why we decided not to use unbundled REX?
Yeah, so there's some, there's, it's debatable, but there is a lot, a majority or a number of people that believe that unbundled REX is kind of a greenwashing type of concept. So you can have REX come with all renewable energy. Sometimes they're sold with a renewable energy called bundled, and sometimes they're sold separate called unbundled. And the bundled REX are supposed to be just more direct. And the unbundled REX are known as maybe being a little bit greenwashing, kind of untrue, because you're not really buying directly green energy. Because it is a kind of controversial topic, we will not be using unbundled REX in our portfolio.
Yeah, good for you.
And this is following up on something Anya had mentioned about 7%, transmission loss. And that's in reference to what, overall? Or 7% per 20 miles? I mean, how?
I don't know. Maybe Anya can explain that. I don't know.
Okay, I thought, you know, as she looked at you, that you're kind of aware of that.
My figure comes from, I think it was a national data study. And we did that for Crewe because, you know, we were told that if you build solar in the Baylands, because of the fog, occasionally, we won't produce as much as this valley does, this more sunny area. And but because you're losing the average, it's an average of 7% of all transmission of electricity. If you have that use loss, then our lesser production would balance that. So so it's a, it's a trade-off. Plus, of course, we have the security and 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 our own transmission.
It's relative to the distance, then, is what it, is what it really is.
Yeah, it's an average.
The overall umbrella is 7%.
Right, so I'm sure it's more for
Relative to the distance. If you had 20 miles of transmission, you're going to lose X number percentage of of that. But if it's 100 miles, you're going to lose a lot more. And if it's 1,000 miles, it's a lot more.
Right. That's probably true, but I'm not an expert, and and I wouldn't say more than that we would
We wouldn't get it 1,000 miles away, though.
Well, I mean.
It goes into that pool, and you know.
Well, it goes into a pool. But I mean, when you, yeah, you, I get that, but there's still, I mean, how it goes and where it comes from and where it goes to. At some point, you know, you got to have enough to supply large cities and stuff like that. And so it actually may be traveling in a, quite a distance. And I think that adds to, you know, the greenhouse gas emissions, you know, because you're having transmission loss, you're making that up somewhere else. And if it's not, you know, your green solar or something like that, then you're
Yes.
Getting that power into that pool somewhere else. So that, you know, I don't think that analysis has really been done because that's a major monster to to undertake. But, you know, I know from some engineering student would love to take that on as his thesis somewhere.
All right. So, oh, Deb?
Hi, I'm Deb Horn. And just wanted to say that I love the idea of competition and incenting renewable energy development. I think all of this is good. But I also just wanted to, you all, because we have this wonderful opportunity with the Baylands to keep a, also kind of a, set a higher bar for our vision. Because, let's say, Germany as an example, they incent point-of-use renewable energy development. So it's on your roof. You don't pay for transmission. And, you know, they're doing things with batteries so that you can store it for cloudy days, those kinds of things. And part of the deal here is with the California PUC is cutting a deal with the utilities. We have large utilities here. And so what they're getting out of this deal is transmission servicing of a very old grid, by the way. And the transmission does have costs that were mentioned here. Like, I just moved from San Diego, so I was part of the, the group who are fighting building this huge solar farm, you know, on the Anza Borrego Desert. And that happened because there were transmission fees for SDG&E. SDG&E did not have net metering, so you couldn't sell, you couldn't have point-of-use, you couldn't sell it back to the grid. So I just want to talk a little bit, or remind us again about the Baylands' opportunity to have a local grid, to have local generation, cut down on transmission, maybe cut down on dependency of these utilities. It's just something to think about.
Thank you very much. All right. So this item's not an action item. It's just, it's workshop. But what are the next steps, Clay, as far as moving us forward and?
The proposed joint powers agreement will be on your February 4th agenda for your consideration.
All right.
Mr. Mayor, you know, Greg, did you want to ask that question to Glenn publicly of something to that? Or you said you had a question for Glenn? Oh, okay.
Okay, well, thank you.
Let me explain. Greg's on the Planning Commission. Glenn's on our Open Space and Ecology Committee, and has been for a long time. She's a professor at San Francisco State and and deals in this field, right? Associate professor, okay.
All right.
Yeah. Well, yeah, and Barbara's also on Open Space and Ecology. And Anya's a former mayor, as Tony's a former council member.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for attending. And Kristen and David, thank you for a great presentation. And you for a great presentation, and I'm sure we'll see you on the floor. Okay, so motion to adjourn?
So moved.
All of us in favor?
Aye.